We're in the public hearing. Sorry. Public hearing is for use of money for the expendable for the for the expendable trust for the purchase lease of a tractor. So this is the Bobcat tractor that we've been discussing.
It's right funny.
Yep. So and this purpose of this hearing this evening is to open up for public comment for use of funds from new trust funds to purchase or at least to put it down payment.
Yeah, first payment on the lease purchase.
Did we get any?
Yes.
Yeah, we did anybody?
We had what four parties interested, we thought.
Yeah, four people, four groups stopped in to look at it. We didn't receive any comments. I'd like to re-listen.
Do we think that's the best way to go as opposed to just trading it in? Do we got some better option than just trading it in?
Yeah, I think it was long one seventy three hundred.
And that's what they're going to go with.
Not one company.
Yeah.
So.
You want to put it out to bid again?
What's that?
You want to put it up for bid one more time?
I want to do that, but I also want to pursue a couple of other applicants, like with the trader. Versus just, you know, all we did was put out a flyer. I'd like to.
Advertise the bid.
Yeah. Put it on market.
Where did you put it out in the newspaper? We put it on our website. We put it on social media.
Yeah, it was on Facebook.
Right, on market.
Yeah, I'd like to add a little bit following that, just our local community. Even though we had local community.
What is the cost associated with that?
Minimal. It, it, you know, I know a lot of these can advertise free.
Yeah.
You know, a crank list can advertise free. Buy your market. Try and be more happy to put it on.
Um, we're not, we're not worried that we're going to be hanging on this thing for a while.
What's that?
What I'm not, you're not worried that we'll be hanging on this thing for too long.
Worst case scenario, we trade it, right?
Well, I think the idea is we're going to make it pretty quickly. It will be making the versus before we have an opportunity to try.
He wasn't going to hold the tractor too much longer.
That's all. You know, I, we don't, we don't have the space to park it.
Okay.
I, if you guys want to trade it, we'll trade it.
Well, no, I, I mean, I think it's a good idea to try to get as much value as we can. And it seems like seventy three hundred is would be stealing for somebody. So I, I suppose worst case scenario, we can advertise it at what we would have gotten for trade. And it seems like if we sell it, we have that price. Yeah. What, what do you think that we would get for it? Like ten thousand or?
Yeah, they're going to work for ten, ten fifteen. It's only good, it's only good over an hour.
Yeah. I think it'd be worth it to, to put it out to bid one more time.
Yeah. And that's, I, you know, we, you know, I, I haven't talked to John Parr. There's a lot of people who will buy himself. And I, you know.
It's just the tractor market, not for the Sander or not, nothing.
The Sander's going with it.
Okay.
And then it's got two buckets.
Yeah, I would think you could at least have for that. Yeah.
It might be worth it too, is, and what I've seen done in the past is send a copy of the bid to some of the tractor places and it's just in the state, not out of state, obviously.
Definitely.
And that was.
I would say down due, because they're always looking for stuff and they're always online looking for it.
That's a good idea too. Yeah.
Okay. So then I guess the, the issue for tonight is what are we? What are we approving? What's the amount? What are we?
We're moving. First of all, I don't know if you guys ever approved purchasing this. So we approved purchases from Dalton Mountain Motors and then the lease purchase um, which would be, which would require ten thousand dollars from the equipment.
Okay. Because this, this hearing is just about that.
The hearing is really just about the trust fund.
We can do the approval for the active purchase during the very meeting.
What is the ten thousand for? Is it just? The first payment. So I asked them to structure it so, because again, we had talked during our budget process. We had originally put ten thousand in the budget. We pulled it out of the budget saying we'll use the trust fund for whatever way we go. And we were thinking of a lease purchase at that time. So there's two schedules attached. There's a three year payment schedule and a five year payment schedule. So I asked, we want to spend ten thousand dollars in this fiscal year. Or coming out of the trust fund. So the first year the payment would be ten thousand and depending on if we do a three year lease, we'd have two more payments of twenty thousand. And then next two fiscal years, so we could budget for those payments in the budget. Or if it's a five year lease, we'd have four more payments of like the ten thousand six hundred and eighteen in the next five, four year budgets. The current tractor is a two thousand sixteen, so the useful life, I think, is well beyond three or five years. So depends on how and you know, again, the interest difference. So the payments over three years would be fifty thousand forty six dollars and thirty four cents.
Almost three hundred.
And the payments out of five year, over five years would be fifty two thousand four seventy two eighty. So the difference twenty four hundred, roughly, yeah, plus.
So is that, is that, that's a decision that you're going to move down?
With some guidance from you, because again, I mean, I think. Which way are you looking?
Yeah, I guess.
I was thinking. But I mean, it depends on if you want to keep the budget as low as possible.
The five year makes sense to me.
Yeah.
Because then you're, you're level funding the five years.
Again, if the useful life of the tractor is well beyond that.
Exactly. That makes more sense to me. And we're only talking twenty four hundred in, in total over the
Exactly.
Three or five.
Exactly. Yeah. That's why I would go with five years.
Well, we can, we can. That can be part of the discussion during the very meeting.
Correct.
So I guess.
Yeah, because either way, the first year's payment, whether you go three or five.
Is going to be. Okay, so I guess if there's no further discussion, let's set the motion to through venture ten thousand dollars. Endable trust for the purchase of the cat.
Make a motion.
Thank you.
Oh, second.
Thank you, Kevin. Any further discussion or questions about that? All of your favorite singles, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Close sessions. Public hearings. With that, uh, this is going to be hearing, public hearing. Okay. Seven, favorite single, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close sessions. So then we'll call the order of the regularly scheduled board meeting, first order.
Can I make a suggestion?
Once.
Is it we do the, finish the tractor now and then Mark doesn't have to stay for the whole meeting? Because it's on the agenda laying back here.
Okay, that's fine. Um, we'll take up as first order to list the purchase of the Bobcat tractor. Uh, this is best of previous hearing, uh, purchases for a Bobcat replacement to the tractor, the current cab. If you're going to be selling the current tractor. And does, does anyone have any further questions about that? Purchase of the tractor. Uh, the only issue I guess outstanding is whether you guys have a three or a five year. Sounds like I'm suggesting a three year or five years. So have any thoughts on that? Okay.
Do you want to follow more motion?
Sure.
I'll make a motion that we approve the purchase of the Bobcat. L twenty eight, is that right? Tractor. Um, as outlined in Dalton Mountain with a five year lease purchase agreement and we put the existing tractor out to bid. Again.
Alright, sir. Thank you, Kevin. Any further discussion? All of the favorite singles, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close sessions.
Thank you, Mark.
Thanks, Mark.
Hey, the place looks great. Pulling in, all the trees cleared, the brush down and.
It's a little bit, Mr. Hang, he did a wonderful job. He folded it all.
Yeah.
And the outside classroom really cleaned up and everything good.
I didn't have to the classroom, but pulling in tonight, it just looked good.
Yeah, it's, it's more to do, but we're going to get there. Alright, thank you, everybody.
Alright, next up is the approval minutes from the July seventeenth meeting.
The motion to vote. It's a small mistake. There is?
In this.
I caught it just on my way over here.
Sure.
On page three, this is principal's report, doctor studies report, bullet. Um, the second line, it says additional clear touch panels for purchase with the professor grant funds. I think it was supposed to say other grant funds. Because it wasn't used. That's where it was not used.
Other, yeah. Yeah, good.
Yep.
Alright.
Catch.
Go ahead, motion in a second. Any further discussion on what features? And all those favorite singles, I was saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close sessions. And public hearings. Next up is correspondence. It looks like I did receive, there's a marketing, marketing mail about some educational program that they're operating. They for some, uh, like I have a good interest to do. Any other correspondence from me?
Just, um, from North Country Educational Services.
That's a second.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, Deb, this is most true to George.
I'm just going to read this. Okay, yeah, um. Still working on closing the twenty three, twenty four books and state reports and the deadline is September first. Um, but I just filed for a little extension like I do every year. Just think I'm going to get there. Almost it. If you recall, the trustees of the trust funds have recommended to move our trust fund accounts to another account. Um, it was the trustee of the trust funds, uh, the Woodstock trustees of the trust fund. Um, and they manage our school trust funds for the district article agreement. So last year they had come to us and said, we'd like to move all of their funds, including the school fund, to a higher earning interest account, which is held by the New Hampshire Public Deposit Investment Pool. You see the statements that I just gave you? That interest is higher than it's ever been.
It's awesome. I saw that.
Huge.
Yep.
It really helps those funds specifically. That money is in, you know, all that money is now available, including that interest for expenditures. So it's wanted to point that out. And we'll continue to monitor. I mean, those, those interest rates are still a lot higher than anywhere else.
You're saying that's a, as a result of them moving into.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It was a really good recommendation by them and yeah, all the accounts of, it definitely is a big benefit. Um, the summer projects are just about complete and the safety ramp projects, which include the windows and doors at the middle high school and the elementary entry, entryway are just about wrapped up. The windows and doors at the middle high school are complete and the elementary glass and doors are installed and the entryway wiring is still lingering, as you can see, still waiting for company to come in and book that up. Um, there's new water absorbing flooring that was installed in the entryway as well, which will help, hopefully help with some of the slips and falls we've had as the kids come in. Where everyone comes in with wet feet, especially during the winter. Um, middle school flooring project is substantially completed. Um, Mark met with the installer this week. There are two rooms that need to be addressed. Um, the teacher's room and the adjoining office, the tile, the tiles are faulty and they're going to, they need to be replaced. Um, we can use those rooms now, but they're going to have to come in again and fix those. So we're going to hold back on the payment of that portion of the job. That's it. All the other classrooms are fine. Uh, DHI should have everything closed up by the end of this week for the middle high school HVAC project. When I say closed up, you still even see the ceiling tiles are still pulled down.
Sure.
Train is finalizing the connections. The insulation is done. The ceiling tiles need to be reinstalled once train is, is done. And then the balancing, the system will be performed by train over the next few weeks, kind of like, you know, when we had this system and even last fall with the, with the middle high school HVAC system was substantially complete at that point. We're just adding in these air handlers on the outside wings. Um, so they'll just be tweaking that, I'm sure. Middle school lockers are in. I mean, that whole middle school wing looks great.
Excellent.
New doors, you know, there's window, new windows in the high school. It looks really good. Um, the low ropes course that was purchased with Title II A funds is installed.
Title four A.
Title four A, sorry. Yeah, Title four A funds. And Mr. Laux is going to be going to training for that. Um, it's going to be used primarily for PE classes and other classes of groups, group activities. And it's located out in the woods between the outdoor classroom and the cookie trail, which is like the trail going out behind the elementary playground here. It's really cool. Um, and again, the final touches and cleanup inside and outside the buildings are full steam ahead. Mark and his crew have managed to get the building torn apart and put it back together in a quick ten weeks. It's amazing. It's amazing what they've done. They have worked really hard. And that's all I have. Let's make it.
Thank you, Deb. It was good. Alright, Dr. City.
Um, so I just follow up that we looked at the attendance through across all three schools. They are all above ninety three percent. I put a little blurb in there about where we want to see it, above ninety five percent. And so as I said, we have our attendance committee that will be starting to really support kids on coming to school. We have kids that are being enrolled, um, in both, uh, Greenwood and White Mountain Community College and from the state university. Uh, so we're really pushing that with the hopes a couple more kids will do that this year. We've had lots of training this summer, whether it's been, um, here. Um, I want to thank Bart and Trey specifically for hosting the clear touch panel training. Uh, the teachers were really excited about it. They shared out in the in-service day of uh, how powerful the tool is. We've had it for a couple of years, but really having that deep dive training. Um, Heather went to that and, uh, she was pretty excited about it, I think.
It was. I didn't have high expectations. I, I struggle with technology as of like a, you know, overall, I was like, I should go to this. And the woman, the presenter was amazing. And I, like, she had us dive right in. It was awesome. And it was three days. You got lots of practice and consistency and repetition, which is what I need. Um, so I left there being like.
One advantage too is the instructor was a former teacher herself who, um, who, um, attended these meetings and it became a certified, um, instructor for clear touch. Clear judge brought her on to their company, but, uh, so she understands the, the teacher's point of view, which is really.
That's awesome. That's great. And I'm really lucky that Bart was right across the hall from me. It'd be like Bart, stuck in two zones. It's cool. One of the things we could do, I talked about this, is a giant screen, but you can set it up in three zones or four zones. I could have a student working on like a fun interactive grammar activity, which grammar is never fun for anybody, but they can move like parts of sentences and then the, another, another pair could be annotating each other's essays. Like we could, you could do so many different things like on one screen. Obviously I wouldn't have ten kids up there, but it's way better than just having a whiteboard, you know, and it could be like a station. I could, there's so many different ways we can use it.
And we've been purchasing these every year over the last couple of years. Uh, in addition to that, we have them. So they're not, um, just vertical. They can flip horizontal. So the younger kids can sit around them. Um, uh, we've had training also on calm de-escalation, uh, our new, some of our staff are going, uh, through training on our new software to identify kids, um, who might need intervention. That triangulates data from behavior and attendance in our state testing to our knee lock testing we do every year. So we can get a really comprehensive look at just at students and where they are. Um, so and then, um, one of the things in the communication piece, it talks about registered, um, New Hampshire Registered Educator Apprentice Program. Um, Mary Ford oversees that. So I'll be working with her to talk about maybe that one would be a site for uh, teacher prep programs. And then, oh, the policy committee meetings are included in the package. And our strategic plan, I reached out to a couple of organizations who do strategic plans that are very comprehensive, but user friendly and easy to read. And, uh, so I had some initial conversations. I've shared some of the information with a couple of teachers to see how, what they think of it. Um, once I get some dollars associated with that and some agreement amongst administration, this is kind of the direction we want to go over to the board. We're thinking that we will not have it ready. Um, our strategic plan would expire in twenty twenty five. So we're hoping to be able to continue with our current one and spend a good year and a half involving the community, the board, business, teachers, all kinds of people to say, what do we want for our public school here, K to twelve? And what would that look like? So it takes a little bit of time to do that. So we do have some things that will need, um, some board action and those will be coming up and on. People who want to do that, let's just see where we are on the agenda. I think that those things are already down here.
Yeah, we'll work through those.
Yeah, we'll look through those a little bit later. Um, one of the things that has come up is, uh, some issues with, uh, transportation around athletics. Um, so we met with Durham Transportation, Matt Manning, trying to piece some transportation. This is not new. This happens every single year.
I just said always.
Uh, but I think that, I mean, you wanted to hold the transportation.
Patient committee, which is Tammy and Joe. We have some ideas. Again, we reached out to some other transportation companies. You know, we, we can have parents drive. That's not ideal.
Right.
Um, but that's what other schools do, but I want to meet with you guys.
Sure.
We can get together and talk about that sooner than later, like, like this week. If you're available this week.
After the meeting, let's, yeah, compare calendars and figure out, yeah.
A whole fashion, mine's written on my refrigerator at home, but.
I'd be lost without my phone.
And then we met with Fresh Picks today regarding our food service and, um, anything specific.
Well, just really kind of a kickoff the year meeting. Fresh Picks is the old, old cafe services. Fresh Picks was under the Cafe Services umbrella. Cafe Services actually sold Fresh Picks to Whitsons Group, because those guys that, um, were in Cafe Services have retired at the end of last year. So Whitsons is another food service company, big, bigger, um, purchase Fresh Picks. We won't see any changes. Um, Fresh Picks is in much as standalone little store organization. They have a lot of schools in New Hampshire, some in Vermont, some in Mass, but primarily in New Hampshire. Anyway, we met with them because we have our annual, you know, kickoff meeting with them to make sure we're all set with programs like breakfast after the bell. Just our regular lunch program, any, any new initiatives that they have. Um, so we just met with them today.
We still have Jack, right?
We still have Jack, which is great. Yeah, yeah. Again, none of their, like even the regional managers, they're all the same, the people that we they'll come and help. So that, none of that has changed.
Yeah. And so then just some upcoming dates. Uh, we had our new staff orientation on August nineteenth. That was a lot of fun. And then we've already been two days, um, in service on for our staff and we've got really positive feedback about the amount of time that they've been able to be in their classroom setting up and getting ready for students. We have open house coming up in September. We've already set that date. Fresh Picks will be helping to do the barbecue this year. Um, on September seventeen, we will be bringing a group of students. We haven't identified them all to the outdoor expo. That's going to be at the Lancaster Fairgrounds to learn about outdoor careers and STEM careers. Uh, and then we're hoping that we could do a facilities walk through on September twentieth, um, following the facility meeting, but before the next board meeting. So you guys can see the updates to the building.
Thank you.
This is the building. Thank you. Yeah, just a little bit of FYI, um, you know, I think you gave me the hook. You stole my thunder on some of these.
Sorry.
Doctor steady. So we had our, like, you know, just about welcome back letter in service schedule went out of the staff, um, right? The new staff mentor breakfast welcome letter went out. As Mary said, on both of those, um, in-service dates or days are going really well. We are getting a lot of positive feedback. You know, we're really open listening and parent guardian, welcome back information package was sent with all the information that the students need to have or sign to come back that first day. Um, and with that, this year we, we put in a little abbreviated, um, cell phone policy and attendance and tardy. Some things that we, you know, have struggled with in the past that we want to work on this year and really, um, they, I think it starts with education and knowledge, right? Let the parents really see that and know. I know we sent home, you know, the parent, the student parent handbook, but sometimes it's kind of daunting, that, that big thing. So we're specifically sending out the areas where we would like a little more assistance with. And hopefully with some education and, and them seeing the policies like there that we send out directly, it, it will help us to, you know, get back on track.
Well, the kids are talking about the, uh, cell phone policy already. So they're aware.
Yeah. So that's what we're trying. We're trying to give everyone a little heads up. So there's no surprises.
Um, so is this, this, this is a change, right? We're, we're requiring kids to turn them over before they come to the classroom.
Yeah, because it's enough, it's in our policy.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And, and right.
We just haven't been doing it.
Previously unenforced.
That's right. And, and we're, we're now, and we're not going to come out like this, you know, the big sled changer. We're, we're going to come out softly and, and, and work with them. And, and I think we also understand that, um, it is going to be a change for them, right? We know that devices can be.
It's a habit. I mean, it's like walking in with your backpack. You're used to having.
Yep.
Probably. So it's going to take some.
It, it is. And, and we're going to be aware of that and we're going to work through it and help them.
Putting that phone in the bucket.
Put it on their back. Doesn't have to necessarily be in there. It just has to be a way during.
Right. And the policy says that the teacher has that place. So we're going to have those, um, sort of like, um, shoe holders that fiddle over the door. And they're clear. So the student can see their phone when they put it in. But yes, if they want to put it in their backpack with it turned off, that's fine. You know, that's just another place to say.
Love the excuse. No, 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 sorry. I couldn't answer.
Yeah.
Respond. I couldn't, yeah.
Yeah. So we're just trying, and that's one of our goals this year too, is, is to be better communicators with all.
Excellent.
And that's what we're trying to do now by sending out those policies. And, um, having everyone be on the same page.
Fantastic.
Yeah. And then I'll just jump ahead. It, it's not on here, but we do have our, um, open house. We're going to have sort of in the gymnasium at the middle high school, sort of an introductory brief meeting. And then we'll have those, some tables set around. So parents also can go around and, and get more information on if they have any questions on the, uh, phone, cell phone or, or watch or your, you know, your watches or the, um, tardy and attendance policies. We're going to be there to, to answer those questions. You know, we want to just, you know, it'll be tough questions and tough answers, but you know, we need to be there for that. So everyone understands.
Excellent.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
I, I doubt you're going to find too many parents that think that their kids aren't spending their time. Alright, thank you. Um, committee report. Give the minutes from it's a all the hearing. Yeah. Is there any other meetings? But then I guess the, the big issue for tonight is implementation on kind of an emergency basis of, of the updated policies regarding, uh, discrimination, sexual harassment. Uh, yeah, that are reflected in their move title line updates. So we got a pamphlet from the State for School War Association related to the headline policy updates. And then we have a number of, uh, policies within our district that we've updated to get compliance. Um, normally they would go to the policy committee, then they would come to us for first reading, and then we go back to the thought, and then they would come to us first for approval. The school war association is, is suggesting that we, uh, truncate that process. Essentially, uh, vote to approve them as they are written currently. And then uh, to the extent we feel like we need to do a more thorough examination of particular advocate policy, ACAAC, which is like suggesting. We can, we can do that at a later date, but I think we were supposed to be, the, the updates at the line, it's a back obvious. So these new policies are going to, you know, need to be in effect with the full service area. We don't have time. Currently to go through that process. So we can always make changes as we need to, although a lot of these are statutory, uh, changes. So we have a lot of relants and some stuff, but I think the suggestion. I think the suggestion from Dr. Steady and the School War Policy, the School War Association was for us to adopt these tonight. Without the, the long year review process. And then we can send them to the um, to the policy committee afterwards, just to go through and make a learning.
Yeah, Sharon said she'd rotate them through.
Yeah. And they're, they're a lot, a lot to, I mean, uh, ACAC is huge. It took a bit to get through. Um, but. So, um, I, I think probably what, what it makes sense to do is actually implement the policies tonight. Withdraw all policies today and then we can. Yeah, I think, and the biggest suggestion, I think, of review was ACAC, which is kind of the bigger.
Where to choose ACM.
That was one, that was one of the other issues, but.
Oh, to review that.
To review that. That's the one like. Fascinating. So. Uh, I guess. The, um, does anyone have any thoughts or, or objections to that kind of truncated process? This circumstance. All right, then, um, then I guess I would.
We have to decide on AC.
Oh, that's true. So ACN uh does have a, it's the accommodation of lactation needs. It has a uh, an optional section. Which we sort of have to choose.
One or two.
One or two, and, and the, the crust of it is whether or not um to pay our employees. For lactation time or to.
I would recommend to go with option two.
Which is to pay, right?
Correct. And there was one other thing on that policy that I noticed uh on the next page, page two. We see two suitable private, suitable private areas. The next line says nursing, nursing mothers, people with lactation needs. Everywhere else in the policy, the words nursing mother has been taken out. So I think that that's an oversight. And the word nursing mothers is to be taken out and we just go people with lactation needs. And if you look at the front page of the policy, it's exactly what's happening.
Underline instead of cross out.
Yeah, I would recommend crossing that out. Yeah. I think it should have been crossed out, not underlined. Yes. And then I recommend uh option two. Does anybody else have any other thought on that?
So we will vote, so the, the vote, the.
On ACN is to approve option two and take that um nursing mothers on page two. And with that, do you want the motion?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve policies AC, ACAC, ACE, GBAM. Uh, ACA, AC dash R two, ACN and IHBCA as discussed sharing.
Thank you, Tammy and Joe. Any further discussion on that? Here, none, all was embarrassing, type of saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close sessions, Mr. Harris.
Make a motion to approve the draft policies AC dash E, J I E and AC, AC dash R.
Anything, Joe, any further discussion on that? Here, none, all was embarrassing, type of saying aye.
Aye.
Close sessions, Harris. Um, and then there are, there are a couple of first reading policies. Um, not related to uh, the headline updates. So the FAA, still in plan. Related to. They're on, they're on for first reading. It's like, I did, is, are these um relations ones that were suggested by?
Yes, that's correct. On that, on FAA, yes.
Okay, right. So IKR is removing that half credit from my courses that we talked about last meeting.
Yeah, and IK.
Okay, perfect. And then the other one is a little more substantial.
Right. And I did see, and I'll ask, um, do you have in front of you that? Right, but I'm number two. When we go back to black, it says for each then-used facility. I think it could, where then shouldn't be there. Which are each unused facility FAA. Um, under number two, after the red, when it goes back to black, for each then-unused facility, for each unused facility. Or am I just not reading it properly?
I think it's then unused. So, so it's talking about in the present. So if, if at the time of the, the writing of the plan. There is a then unused facility, then we have to also incorporate.
That's fine.
So setting it on over to.
I, I read it several times. It just sounded weird to me.
It's written legally and that's.
Through this one, I, I guess about the policy committee level, not the board level, yeah. A couple of times. So they're already at first reading, so I'll make a motion to move to second reading. Policies FAA, IKF dash R and IKP.
Any further discussion on that? All of the embarrassing type of saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close sessions and motion Harris. I just, uh, a curiosity, the handbook that went out, it reflected this change, right? We have, next up is staff nomination, recognition, unit of the issues.
Yes, we have one um nomination, recommendation um for Tara, Dylan Marson. And that was the last year position. Could be a great fit for us.
Excellent.
He just graduated college and has done some work um in a special education classroom. And he has a degree in music pathology, so he asked about opportunities to be able to infuse that throughout the school.
Fantastic. It was hilarious. He came in my, can I tell him this? It's really funny. Came in our math wing door because I was bringing all my plants in, so the door was. Proper open. I had a plant there. There's guys working in the ceiling. The math wing does not look super attractive right now, but it's all going to come together. For the, this like little boy like pokes his head in my room. He's like, excuse me, I'm not sure where I'm supposed to be. But I said, oh, you must be Dylan, because they introduced him yesterday, but he wasn't there. He looked like his face, he was, how do you know my name? And it's a small school, but I'll show you where you need to go. But he, he was bewildered by the, he was like walking through. Really cute, but oh my, that's so young.
I'd like to point out that the math man on his best day is not that attractive.
Um, I'll make a motion to approve the hiring of Dylan Marson as a parent.
Thank you, Joe. Any further discussion on that? All of the embarrassing type of saying aye.
Do we have any other empty, sorry? What do we have left?
So, uh, the open position is PE health. Uh, we were able to meet with home state university this week. And we have two student interns that will fill that position. Uh, the details are uh going to be developed over the next couple of days. The first, a week of school, they will be with us, so we already have planned for other teachers to cover those classes. And those two speed student interns will be mentored by Aaron Love to the P E and Christie Duritz for the health.
Fantastic.
And um, the other pieces, the hall coaches.
Oh, good.
Yep, so we're all set with that.
Wow.
Yep. We, we worked really hard this spring, Peter and I.
Yes, we did.
To get those filled.
Yeah.
So we would have the issues at the beginning of the school year.
Excellent.
Are, are these students that are like graduating in coming years?
They're graduating in May.
Okay.
This is their last year and it'll be their student, student teaching experience.
We, we will have them for the whole year, the end of the whole school year, which is just this semester.
And we spoke today about making sure that our younger faculty um have uh some fun, exciting things to happen. So we can retain them. So we're going to try to build a culture there with them.
Yes.
Good idea.
That's correct.
All right, um. Board audit question there.
The, I'm sorry, I just wanted to tell you. Varsity boys' um soccer coach is Blair Whedon. He's the head coach. Adam Demati is the assistant coach. Max. Yep, Joel Block, assistant coach. Our city girls soccer coach is Heidi Ford. Um, and she's the head coach. Jeff Krill is the assistant coach. Cross country is Sydney Campbell. She's our head coach. Sarah Boden's the assistant coach. The middle school boys soccer, Jimmy Martin, who was the head. And Stuart Anderson is the assistant. The middle school girls soccer, the head coach is Heather Krill. And our assistant is Ryan Wean.
Those are great coaches. Everyone.
And we have a soccer jamboree on Saturday if you guys want to come.
That's fantastic. Soccer all day.
Yay.
Nine to three. If the girls play nine, eleven, one, and then the boys play ten, twelve. And two, can't get enough.
Is it middle school?
No. Just high school. We're not ready to.
Are these like considered regular season games or are these just warm up?
Yeah, warm up. It's like a jamboree, just, yeah.
Although their first game is the twenty ninth of our city teams. When's homecoming? Do we know? We do know.
I don't know if that's Lisbon's or ours, because maybe ours is the weekend after Lisbon.
Those two.
Yeah, yeah. I believe it's the twenty eighth.
All right. Anything else in nominations, speculations, or suggestions? Our board audit question there? Is there any?
So that's a new packet. We have uh last year's questionnaire and this year's questionnaire and then the same questionnaire.
So we usually do this at the board when we have everybody here, so.
Oh, yeah. The auditors will be here in the week of, I promise we. So we have time.
So, early afternoon.
Yeah.
Okay, so we can get at least more people here.
Try to do it at the next meeting. Looking over just. I mean, although I don't think they're going to be pressed if we do it without them.
Probably not. There's a lot of questions in there that are basically supposed to be answered by everybody, you know.
Yeah, let's try it at the next meeting.
All right, um. The, oh, the uh, National School War Association General Governance and Effective Meeting Training Day. So it's September eleventh is the proposed date. Any issues with that? What is that? So the School War Association is going to conduct a free training, basically for the board on um. How to, you know, best practices for applications and uh running effective meetings. Maybe, maybe fall into general governance, but there is a specific manual training.
There's two separate trainings they do.
Yeah.
Um, and it, and this one would just be general rules and governance.
Yeah, I know I did one of those with them online.
You probably when you first started as a board member, yeah.
Actually, I went down there for one of them.
Because they have the new board member training.
Yeah.
A lot of it's online, I know, too, but.
I think. This is probably sort of like a refresher of a little bit.
That was a good idea.
So we had talked about, yeah, we talked about having them come in. I think the board was pretty.
Is that at six P M as well?
It's been an email I sent out. I think uh we were thinking five to seven and then do the board meeting at seven P M.
And then the regular meeting at seven, so.
And I'm sure. Uh, then the special policy committee meeting dates. We need a special policy committee meeting.
Uh, I think because that would be the day we'd have our policy meeting, so it's not a special. I think it's just an extra. I think we should.
What do we have? Do we know? We have policies coming up? Can we skip one?
Um, I think it was the second reading of. Anyone's coming on from. I'm not sure the schedule of what she was going to bring forward. Um, I didn't see any, shouldn't bring anything that was urgent to me. Um. But that would mean we wouldn't have one. Did you have it once a month?
But we'd have one until October. Yeah. September twenty fifth meeting will be facilities and then facilities walk through. It's up to Sharon. She wants to, us to have one early or another day or whatever. It's, we can make it work. Or if she's comfortable skipping it, it's up to her. She's the.
I think she. She was implying to have another one, but maybe have it on a different day earlier, so we could just.
Do it in the office or something.
Right, that's what she was thinking. Reach out directly and schedule that and it'll just be earlier during.
Whatever works.
Not late evening and get it done.
Whatever works for the other two.
Okay.
That can happen.
Thank you. I don't think it ended up.
Uh, so.
Tammy and Jeff.
Tammy and Jeff are the negotiations team, so really you guys need to talk about.
Seventeenth, eighteenth, nineteenth, or the twenty fourth.
And that would just be the.
Initial.
Initial meeting.
Yep, and then they would set the voting schedule.
Seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty.
Seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, or twenty four.
The only day I couldn't be was the nineteenth, so whatever works for that.
Okay, so we'll get them, and we'll see. Yeah. Is that something you would sound or do I send?
So.
Sharon would usually kind of.
Sharon. Okay, all right. I'll, I'll work with Sharon to get those dates. All right.
Oh, right, because we, that's, that's our attorney. Those were the updates that are. They're representatives.
Yeah.
Okay. So if we send out seventeen, eighteen, and the twenty four.
Yeah.
To the board, sorry, to the, yeah. We already did back to sale. Let's see, students do that.
I'm only in two things. Um, we had a speaker today, um, Marilyn Kennedy was here. She spoke to us for about two hours and she was wonderful. Um, she was high energy. She was like a, I don't know, she's probably my age. She was a bodybuilder. Um, she was hilarious, but she kept, she kept flexing, which really was funny. Like, I haven't had a speaker do that. And, but the idea was break, finding joy in our craft again. And so the goal of the whole workshop was really to make us laugh and to connect. And to think about those things that keep us from laughing regularly with our students and also what keep our students from maybe being as. From maybe being as joyful as we want kids to be. Um, so it was very mindful. I laughed. It was great. Really great way to start the day. Um, so thank you um for bringing her. I guess the middle school team met her at their Nelms concert, concert, concert. It felt like a concert this morning. Um. Jack's lunches been exceptional, best. I've been here twenty-one years, and I feel like. It's the best we get for food. That little one's, he's done a great job. Um, all of our fall teams have full rosters. Um, which is awesome. It means that the varsity teams won't have to. Steal my babies.
Well, I mean, did you look at the coaches? Of course, the teams are full. Great coaches.
It's true.
Yeah.
It's true. Um. Oh, and we had um grade nine orientation today. So the incoming freshmen, there's twenty-four of them on roster, and twenty of them came for orientation. My own kid would not come, but everybody else. And it was really, it worked out probably better. Um, so we had Danny T, uh, who was our PE teacher last year from PSU. She's now working for Adapt um with Sean O'Brien, but she came and did some team building with them and a few ninth grade teachers. Uh, we did scavenger hunt. They found their lockers. We finished up with popsicles and ice cream sundaes, but it was awesome. Three's good. And I just wanted to thank um Kevin Bell and um Casey for their work on the skate park. It gives me such joy um to see that that is. Coming to fruition after all these years. So I know it hasn't been easy, but Rita sticked to it in the rec department, and I feel like. Carver was like six or seven when you started that journey, and he's going into high school, and it's getting done, so thank you. Um, I'm bad. We were talking about it at school today at breakfast. Did you see the pictures online? They're like leveling out the skate park. Hallelujah. Um, so I'm excited. I I haven't been, I ended the school year not feeling super positive about being a teacher and feeling really burned out, and. Um, I feel like the summer with professional development that we did and taking time off just to. Play and have fun. Like, I I'm I'm excited to start the school year, and I haven't been in a while, so that feels good.
Excellent.
Even if I have to have Carver in ninth grade this year. I won't put that in the minutes.
Sprite those.
Yeah, strike that.
Won't approve it.
He's not one.
Yeah, he's definitely not one.
Get the recording when you hear a beep.
Thank you, Skrill. Uh, I I don't see anyone from the community, so and and I don't believe we have anything for now.
We have one thing.
Yes.
Um, the School Board Association Delegate Assembly, Saturday, October nineteenth.
Will be volunteering for that, that's.
October, yes, which is the day my niece gets married. I will be in Arkansas. I did look through what um they're coming forward with, and it's. Obviously, it's not important. It's all important, but there's nothing that directly affects Linwood, so that if it needs to be skipped, this wouldn't be a bad year to to that down. Not that we need to, but. And I also.
Is it not the chair or assistant chair?
No, it could be anybody. Perfect. Thank you. Joe's taking one for the team.
Whoa, you guys always give in.
What a guy.
I actually got to be a speaker tomorrow to restore the justice.
So you was in, it's not heard at the. Was it the?
Yeah.
No, he he was commenting on where he's going.
Oh, that's it. I will send you the email when you register.
Okay.
Okay, I'll forward it right to you.
Great, thank you, Joe. Anything else?
That was it, fine.
All right.
Thank you.
Second motion to adjourn.
So.
Thank you. Third, fourth, thank you, as far as a favor.
They gave you the same name.
That is unanimous.
Okay.
We're adjourned.
Delicate assembly.